The meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, June 7th, 2023, please come to order. This evening's meeting will be a hybrid planning and zoning meeting hosted in person at the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center, 323rd Street, Guilford, Connecticut, Nocturne Row, second floor, as well as virtually by Zoom. During this meeting, our proceedings will be as follows. One, when you first enter the Zoom meeting, you'll be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one, and your microphone will be muted by the meeting host when you enter the meeting. You can turn on your camera at any time so that you can be seen by others when and if you choose to, in order to run an efficient and orderly meeting in this virtual environment, unless stated otherwise by the meeting chairman during the meeting. The meeting host will keep everyone other than the commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members, even if you're muted and or the camera is not on. There will be opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time public participants will be unmuted. Three, the secretary will read the call of the meeting as published according to Governor LaBance's executive order. Four, during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explain its mission, and others present wanted to be requested. The meeting hosts will share all related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through the public meeting calendar page of the town website, www.gilfordct.gov, and also through a direct link on the planning and zoning page. Five, comments of town agencies will be read for each application. If there are any, there will be clarifying questions from the commissioners. Six, there will then be an opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand to the Zoom platform and wait to be called on unmuted. As this public hearing must be recorded, it's necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak by stating their name and address. Seven, for all clarifying questions are after. All clarifying questions are exhausted. Those who wish to speak in support of the application will be asked to come forward, state their name and address for the record, and make a statement. Then those who wish to speak in opposition to the application will ask to come forward, state their name and address for the record, and make a statement. Eight, the applicant will then have an opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Nine, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or stay for the balance of the public hearings and the regular meeting. During which the commission will try to reach a decision on the advocate application. The applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of this commission and has a right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Ten, citizens of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling Planning and Zoning Department at 203-453-8039, or by emailing planning.zoning@gilfordct.gov after 9:00 a.m. Eleven, all actions taken on applications tonight are commissioned by roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. See you this evening. And the following members who please identify themselves. Kevin Clark?
Present.
Bill Freeman?
Present.
Ted Sands?
Present.
Bill Johnson?
Here.
Sean Cosgrove?
Here.
Haven't seen the frame. And I'm Scott Edmund, Chair. All tents tonight are Jason Markey. And Larry Resort.
Here.
Already received tonight. Staff present are Steve Manick, Interel Town Planner, Nigel Mills, Assistant Town Planner, and Janine Morgan, Administrative Assistant, Planning and Zoning. This meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available on the town website for viewing. The secretary will now read the legal notes.
May I ask, Secretary, that the notice be put on screen? Because I've got a legal notice in front of me, but it does not include NAP.
That's not, I'm sorry. That was previously legally noticed, so it's not notice again.
Okay, alright. So I'll read the notice. We're planning a zoning commission notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid public hearing on June 7th, 2023 at 7:30 p.m. Attendees may join at the Nathaniel B. Green Community Center or via Zoom platform by using the following link. Due to limited space, members of the public wishing to attend in person are asked to register with the Planning and Zoning Department. The following application will be heard. Greg Fettis, Fettis Engineering LLC, 230 Water Street, MAP 32, Lot 97, Zone MR1, Special Permit and Coastal Site Plan for Additions and Modifications to Existing Marine Commercial Buildings. Al Secundino, A Segundino and Son, Inc., 441 Boston Street, MAP 48, Lot 52, Zone R3, Special Permit and Coastal Site Plan for an addition connecting the two buildings of an existing daycare business following variance approval. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the Planning and Zoning Office and on the town's website. At this hearing, persons may attend via web connection and shall be heard. All documents shall be submitted to planning.zoning@gilfordct.gov 24 hours prior to the meeting day. Documents are available at the Planning and Zoning Office, Bell 203-453-8039. For assistance dated in Guilford, Connecticut at the 16th day of May, 2023. Scott Edmund, Chairman.
Secretary, entertain motion to open the public hearing. Tell them, second. Oh, David, do say.
Hi.
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 I have two things, two announcements before we get started. First is, as you heard in that legal notice, we are asking for 24 hours for you to put, to send in anything that you would like to be part of the public record for the upcoming meeting, 24 hours before that meeting. Because our staff is a little taxed right now as we look for a town planner to replace our previous one. We're going to start adhering to that 24 hours before the meeting stipulation. If you get it in after, and if they happen to have the time, then they will get it to us and get it as part of the meeting. If not, then it would just become part of the next meeting if there is one for that item. Just wanted to let everyone here and everyone that might be watching on the Zoom call, I mean, watching on the recording. Second thing, and I apologize if you didn't get the word, but the applicant for Anna Maria visiting NAP requested for their application to be tabled to June 7th, 2023 meeting. So if you're here for that one, I apologize that you didn't get the word that they requested the table. But it's going to be moved to, I'm sorry, to July 5th. That being said, if you need to leave, go ahead and leave quietly. Sorry about that. We just found out today. Sorry about that. That being said, could I entertain a motion to adjust our agenda to move this due now up to the beginning of the arena?
Oh, moves.
I have a second.
A second.
Second.
Hi. Would I like to bring a motion to table to July 5th, 2023? Alright, Larry Resort.
Yes.
Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Phil Freeman?
Yes.
Bill Johnson?
No.
Scott, I hear.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Table to July 5th?
Are, yes. Scott, any special request going to the 5th as opposed to either the 21st or the 19th?
So, the reason why it's getting tabled is because they have some work to do yet. CTDEP has a request in for them to review some major species, and they also are working on their site plan to update the open space that's being offered, so they've got some work to do. That's why they asked for July 5th. Just for everyone's information, July 5th will be the last potential open meeting that they can have for the application before we have to respond to it. So, we'll be hearing it back.
Yeah, so, just to clarify, Scott, I think they they could, if they choose to, if they can't get all their ducks lined up, they could withdraw and reapply.
Want to speak to that, Steve?
Yeah, they could reapply. And just to clarify, I believe that July 5th is the last day you can keep the hearing open until you have 65 days to deliberate after that. You just have to close the hearing.
Close, you then have 65 days to deliberate, correct?
Yeah. So, Steve, I would assume all the commissioners have read your memo of June 5th. It was very well done. It was very thorough. And I think that among maybe some other factors was the reason that the applicant decided to move to July 5th.
Thanks, John. Just FYI for all listening. For John, he's mentioning something that's available on the website. If you would like to go look it up.
If you don't mind, my concern is that a lot of people take that week off. And so, people that might want the opportunity to speak very well could be away. And I know that's their choice, but I'm just curious why we can't actually on the 21st, as opposed to right up against the wall.
Second, so. Okay. Your points well taken. This is where we are.
Yeah.
Alright. Next item on the agenda is Greg Fettis, Fettis Engineering LLC, 230 Water Street, MAP 32, Lot 97, Zone MR1, Special Permit and Coastal Site Plan for Additions and Modifications to Existing Marine Commercial Buildings. For this application.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Greg Fettis with Fettis Engineering, Professional Engineer Licensed in the State of Connecticut, representing the owner of Guilford Boat Yards. What we're proposing, and I don't know if we need to be looking at a site plan or sharing a site plan.
Have it available, or we can ask our town staff for.
I can do it if.
Up to.
Yeah, why don't I do it? That way I can point this stuff. Now, it says that the host is disabled participant screen sharing.
You'll work on that.
So if you want to put it up, that's fine.
Okay, while you're, while you're, we're working on that, can you, should we begin now?
Should be good for you to share it out.
Should we begin now?
Okay.
It's not that I can share.
Alright, so the site's located at 230 Water Street. It's an existing boatyard, has existing dockage, ability to put boats in the water. So that, in boat storage in the winter, there's an existing store, and I'm just gonna blow up the screen a little bit. Get in the right position here. Alright, I think this has everything we're doing now. So there's an existing building. It's labeled number five. You can kind of barely see it. It's it's the existing marine store on site. It's in rough shape to be probably kind. It's ready to kind of fall in on itself. So it needs to be replaced. So we looked at replacing it basically in kind. But we thought it would, my client thought it'd be better just to do in addition to the existing building to the north, which is this building here. So we would propose to demolish this building. You can see it's a little bit, it's not a true rectangle. But that building has about 1,262 square feet of floor area. The addition we're proposing is 36 by 30. And that is 1,080 square feet. The addition will be elevated compared to the existing building by about almost seven feet to be flood compliant. It'd be built on a slab. And basically, it's to replace the marine store. So, couple things. One of the reasons we did it was from a safety standpoint, there will be the ability to look through from the, where the the cashier or the one employee that's in there into the other building, which it's labeled office building, but it's it's got a little bit of office in there, but it's mainly where they do some of the repairs on the boats. So it's kind of a visual inside the building. And it kind of consolidates the efforts of the boatyard. There. So we're also adding parking, more defined parking than what's out there. Today, we're adding a handy accessible space. That will be the only one that's paved. Then the rest of it will be gravel. You can see we're adding 16 spaces, very defined in a gravel through fair to the rest of the site. The one other thing we're scroll, I scrolled up somehow. I don't have my Alright, so we're also replacing this building number four, which again is in rough shape. That's a storage building. He wants to store his, the outboard motors in there. Again, we're raising that up. The current finished floor is about elevation nine. We'll be raising that to 14, about five feet. We're proposing a gravel ramp in order for easy access into, into the building, but it will be up a five additional feet, which will give us plenty of free board above the flood levels. So those are the two kind of big picture items we're, we're doing. There's some staff memos out there and or letters that we have some items to address. One of the big things that you probably read about was the, the area to the I guess it would be the southeast. This area down here is where they store boats in the winter. There was staff that was running in. What's that?
What's it?
So staff was looking at some aerial photographs. And my client did add some crush stone that was mistakenly taken for Millings. Millings. I would agree, Millings can compact to a more impervious surface. But I was out there on Monday just reviewing what was put down, and it is an actual crush stone that will allow direct infiltration into the ground, ground below. And I believe, I know Janice, the town engineer, was also out there, I believe, Monday or Tuesday and concurred with, with our interpretation of the product that was put down. So that's one of the, that was one of the big things in the staff was looking to do like a stormwater management plan because of the Millings and so forth, but I think they've since that, and there may not be anything formally yet in the record, but the staff has agreed with our interpretation and that a separate stormwater management plan would not be required. We do have a couple little items left, I think, to, to address. One is a a detail, we're proposing to put all the roof water from the rebuilt buildings and the addition into an underground infiltration system that would capture and store at least the first inch of rainfall. Staff is also looking for potentially some additional silt fence, which we, we would comply with that, and some, maybe some additional erosion control, which we would comply with. Staff is also looking for a detail of the gravel parking lot. We do have what we consider a pervious gravel parking lot detail, so that'll be added to the plan. We did show the limits of boat storage on the, on the wetland side or the riverside. We did not show it on the balance of the site, so we'll be adding that. It would be on the, and we'll actually show the, the current limits of the crush stone. It's not, I wouldn't say it's too far off from what's shown on the plan. That island in the middle right, right here was covered with crush stone, and then it did expand a little bit. So we'll, we'll locate that and make sure that's accurately depicted. I think that, and there are some issues with, Janice was concerned about how we're constructing the addition, because the existing building does not, is not raised to the correct flood level. We're not proposing to. So there's a couple of different ways we can handle that. We, we're just building a shell. There's no, you know, there's no kitchen, there's no bathroom, there's no you know, it's, it's a very simple shell, so we don't think we'll be above the 50% substantial improvement number, which would make us raise that existing building up to flood level. So we don't think we need to do that. That, that's something she thought maybe could be handled at the building department level. I would agree with it. Typically, that's where it's handled. But we did think about that. I do think we're, we're under, we're positioned to get a appraisal of the existing building to see what the actual value of that is. And, you know, we basically need to stay under 50% of the value of that. There is ways to, to do it if we're over without bringing that into compliance. I don't think we want that office or that existing building raised up five or six or seven feet. Just because I think it would look out of place, and now we would not really be able to get into that level. Now you can drive right in.
Hey Greg, this is Sean Cosgrove. I, I thought you said that the existing building that you outlined was going to be taken down.
Yeah, I did.
He's talking about the existing office building.
Yeah.
Right. So this, this building here that's labeled existing office building, finished floor 7.65 is not coming down. This building over here is
Exactly.
Building number five, that is coming down.
Right.
And the store basically is going to move over into the shaded addition. That'll be at flood level or above, or a couple feet above. But I, I think we want to avoid trying to raise that existing building where they do the majority of their repairs. And there's a couple of different ways to do it. One, we stay under the 50% substantial improvement. Or two, we actually build a, a separate structure that's right up, you know, within a a hair of the other building, so they're independent.
Yeah, so they're, they're, so in other words, they're not connected.
Correct. So that's, that's a way to do it. You know, there's, there's pluses and minuses to that, but I, I don't, you know. Well, well, I'd like to cross that bridge when we get to the building department. But we, we're very aware of it. Janice pointed it out. I think she's on the same page we are with building a separate structure. If that's what we need to do.
And will, will building four be taken down?
Building four will be taken down and rebuilt in kind, except it's being raised up to get above the flood level.
Thank you.
So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If I missed anything from any of the reviews that you'd like to me to address now, we're going to be coming back, revised plans that staff has commented on, and hopefully we resolve all of their concerns by the 21st.
Questions from commissioners before we move on to town staff comments?
Question?
Yep.
What year was the existing office building built?
I'm not sure. I'd have to, I can get that information for next time. I, I they didn't separate the buildings, I think, on the, on the field card or the property card.
Just curious if it was of the same vintage as building five, which is being taken down.
I know it's in much better shape than building five, than building five. And I think it's a different construction also. I think there's some concrete block and so forth on a portion of it at least. But I can find out the years for the, of all the buildings for next time.
I'm just, I'm just curious about the, the valuation of the building as it relates to the new construction and what new construction costs are.
Yeah. Well, we
I don't want to get, you guys get in a pickle where, you know, all of a sudden the, the construction costs go over what you think, and you get into a situation of significant improvement, and it becomes a problem.
Yeah, so we, we will hopefully resolve that before, at the building department level. In worst cases, we just build a separate structure that's not physically attached to the existing building. But it's right in the same spot.
Any other questions for we, for reading town staff comments? Alright, what do we have for town staff? Who knows, Mr. Phil Johnson, we're the first one.
If you can call it up on the screen, I would love to.
Yeah, nevermind. Really, I would stop sharing. Greg, can you stop sharing, please?
Oh, yes, sir.
Like kindergarten, but if you stop sharing. We're planning a zoning commission from Shirley Minkins, RS, June 7th, 2023. RE 230 Water Street, MAP 32, Lot 97 addition. The Health Department has contacted, thank you very much, contacted the engineer to submit a B 100A application for the proposed addition at 230 Water Street. Soil testing is required for any increase in square footage of the building to determine that a code complying area is available on site. We are working with the engineer to schedule soil testing for next week. Any changes made to the engineer plan will need to be submitted to Health Department for review. Shirley Minkins, RS.
Mr. Phil Freeman, do the rest one?
Nope, we're bringing it up.
You know, June second, twenty twenty-three to the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, environmental planner. Referring to Cocal Area Manager Review and Special Permit two thirty Water Street Guilford, Connecticut. Zero, six, four, three, seven assessors map thirty-two lot ninety-seven. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing store and replace it with. An addition to an existing building adjacent to the West River along with the replacement of an existing storage building. At a higher elevation near the tidal wetland. The application of the site plan indicate that the stormwater from the roof leaders, from the store addition and the storage building. Placement will be directed to underground infiltration galleries. No sizing information location of the infiltration galleries or product details is shown in the submitted plan. Portions of the proposed construction is located within the FEMA flood zone of AE eleven. The coastal resource policies applicable for the property are developed. Shorefront coastal hazard area, weather coastal waters, nearshore waters, shorelands and tidal wetlands. The plan shows some. Erosion and sedimentation control measures to the east. Of the reconstructed storage building, which could be expanded to include the whole length of the storage building in ramp. No erosion and sedimentation control measures are shown around the proposed building addition or the parking area to be installed. At the location of the demolished or supply building. In addition. No details are shown for protection of any stockpiles that may be created from the excavation of the store addition. The work being conducted. Could have an impact on the adjacent coastal resources if the erosion and sedimentation control measures are not properly installed. At the correct mutations, locations and maintain. Existing plans do not reflect the current site conditions based on current aerial photographs of the property. The boat storage area on the south side of the property has been. Covered by impervious material as defined by the zoning regulations and has been expanded further to the south. This increase in impervious area needs to be calculated and treated in a stormwater management system. These modifications to the site need to be shown on the site plan to be approved. In order to make sure the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following additions of approval. Revised plans should be submitted showing additional erosion and sedimentation control measures, stormwater mitigation plans. Expanded storage boat area to the south side of the property and current impervious surface conditions. Two, town of Guilford zoning enforcement office should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to the site construction. Soil stockpile should be obtained by self fencing and or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established. Or suitable materials installed to satisfaction of the zoning, of zoning enforcement. Three, the town of Guilford enforcement officer should be notified. To inspect the roof water infiltration system and. And as-built plan showing the infiltration location should be submitted to the zoning enforcement office prior to the issuance of the certificate of zoning compliance. In accordance with stormwater regulations, the stormwater government or stormwater management plan should be filed on the land records.
Uh, Chris Fetus, uh, you mentioned a, a number of items that. Like you noted in this memo here, you. Uh, you said you're updating your drawings for our next, uh, public hearing on the side of, you're going to cover everything that he has in his. Uh, memo here.
Greg, Greg Fetis, uh, Fetis Engineering, yes, uh, we're going to cover. Uh, the majority of the items on there, um. I think there's agreement between the town engineer and the. Planner, the interim planner that, uh, the material that was. Expanded or put down in the boat storage area. Is not impervious. It's pervious, so we won't be required to, uh. Do the stormwater management plan, but we'll work all that out with staff, uh. Prior to the meeting and hopefully have clean letters from everyone prior to the meeting.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, I, I agree with Greg's comments. Uh, I submitted a memo for the record dated, um, June fifth, and I submitted a revised one dated June seventh, which clarifies what Greg just said. I can attest to.
Okay. All right, okay.
Uh, excuse me. Janice, I can attest that Janice Plazak did go out to the site and inspect it. In my original memo, I cited that I thought it was. Uh, Millings, uh, Janice has confirmed that's crushed stone. Uh, and that it should be classified as an impervious surface and I agree with that assessment, um. I don't think a stormwater management plan for that. Uh, particular area should be required at this time, and I think for the most part, Greg has addressed, um. Or at least, uh, spoken about my other. Fairly minor comments on the application.
Steve, uh, Steve, speaking of Janice's memo, was that the only item that she had to discuss? Should we? Do we not need to read that one in the record since it's pretty much recovered? Do you think there's more items that we need to go through on it?
I think all of the, the big items were addressed, primarily that she was requesting that infiltrators, um. Specifications be included for the, the roof leaders for the building. And that the, um. She, she did request a stormwater maintenance plan, but since that. Time, we've, we've both agreed that we don't think one should be required for the crushed stone area. She's out of the office today.
Safe to say that she's going to review the updated drawing as well?
Yes, we'll all provide updated memos.
If we have any other memos, then he's already done. In case I will. Chris, Steve's memo, or should you mention earlier? Steve, do we need to me read yours? You feel like you've covered, we've covered your level of law?
I think you've, you've covered the bulk of the items on there.
All right, so any further questions for commissioners? Um, as, as you've heard, this is definitely going to be going to a second, uh, public hearing. This is a special permit, but. If you are here to, to ask questions or speak about this application. Now is the time, first we'll, uh, ask anyone who has, if anyone has any questions for the applicant. Uh, to raise your hand here or online. Uh, so seeing known for questions, we'll ask if anyone would like to speak in, um, support of this application. Uh, either raise your hand here or online and you can have your time. Would anyone want to speak in app, uh, opposition to this application? All right, seeing no further discussion, commissioners, I'd like to motion to continue this to our, um. May seventeen, I'm sorry, June twenty-first meeting?
A vote?
Thank you, Phil. Second from Larry, uh, Larry Zola.
Yes.
Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Phil Turner?
Yes.
Phil Johnson?
Yes.
Uh, Cosgrove?
Hi.
And, uh, well, yes, we'll see you at our next meeting. Thank you, Greg. Uh, next time on our agenda, Al Secundino, A Secundino and Son Inc., four forty-one Boston Street, that forty-eight lot two, stone R three. Sun Department and folks' site plan for an addition connecting the two buildings of existing daycare facilities following variance approval.
We, I'm ready for school engineering, representing the owner of applicant four forty-one. Boston Street, um. Only have been to one other hybrid meeting before, quite honestly, it was a disaster. I don't know where you want them to set up.
So the cameras here, um, if you. But we can bring up what you're showing a lot as well. So if you wanted to put it up there to everybody here in the audience, conceiving, sure, that'd be great. And then, uh, the only other thing with this microphone is just protect.
So you may have come on this side first to get it well.
Yeah, the microphone is over here, so if you can protect, maybe that's finer. If you feel like you need to move closer to the light.
Okay. Uh, as I said, um, Tim Brady with school engineering, uh, this property is located, you have a corner of Boston Street and Soundview Road. It was at some point in time, two properties that were have been since merged. Um, there is existing on the property, um, two buildings that are. Currently in place of daycare, uh, by special exception of August nineteen seventy-eight. Uh, and then there's a house here that is. Property access from, uh, the, the property. They care part of property is accessed from Soundview Road. Um, there is parking for teachers here, drop-off area, and then there's a ladder with her. Proposals that add an addition, and these are both single-story buildings, slab. The proposals that add, uh, connecting building, uh, also a single-story and slab. Um, so that, uh, that will expand the daycare use and allow movement of the. Children within the building, uh, from different areas, um, that exist in the new areas. Inside, and on the weather, provides. So, you know, additional safety. We have provided, um. For the expansion of the teaching staff, uh, there will be. Your, your folks don't really have a, uh, very specific parking requirement for daycare. Uh, so we have provided, um. It will park in for projected teacher. Increase and also, um, number of spaces again for drop-off, which are five-minute partners versus people can pick up, drop off. We have also, uh, provided. Fenced in, separated fenced in. Playyard areas. On our district curve, uh, somewhat. Wood chip areas. Um, we have provided a rain garden. Element here, sort of. Landscape in the front of this existing building, uh, but it, it's for the increase that the new roof is going to present for the site. There was a number of, um. Staff comments that we received last few days of. One was, uh, the health department. So we haven't addressed those concerns. I think they're minor. Um, the majority of the concerns centered around, uh, landscaping. Lighting, we have not provided a lighting plan yet, but currently there isn't any lighting in the parking lot. Yeah, always don't really suggest the need for it. But what they do have, uh, what we are doing is having a wall back. Uh, you know, above the doors, entrance for the access to the parking lot. Um, I did add the cut sheet for that onto the detail sheet. Um, we did, I don't know. Yeah, I could send you the plans later today. I brought up the twenty-four hour program, but. It has, so this is, um. Uh, our landscaping plan, there were a couple of trees that were omitted from the original plan. Um, so there are some mature trees here. This mature tree is actually there intending on saving, uh, so I do have to. There are some various trees. There was two new trees planted by the pound recently when the sidewalks went slow. Um, we're going to add another one similar to that here and continue that theme from up here. Um, we are adding some landscaping, then along the front of the new building. Will be viewed from Soundview Road. And again, the rain garden area will be kind of the buffer of the planning for the existing building that's there. Uh, we do have plans by the architect, um. On Edwards. Then that word also included. Door plans and. Elevations. See, this is, this is the view from the Sound, Soundview Road, this is the existing building, the center. This is the new building. We're not scale-wise, we're not increasing height of the structure on the site hall. There is a step, if you're looking from the parking lot area, that existing building is a little bit lower, so there is a step in the roof line, that direction. But overall, we're not increasing height. Okay. It includes also in the, uh. You know, this morning, I can give you. Bright and early, the air is going to be, um, taking us over, and they have a number of other facilities. Typical, their typical play yard looks like, um, just. Yeah, they're on screen there now, but just to give you a sense for. What that element going to look like.
Uh, Mister Chairman, uh, I, I apologize. I don't have the name of the gentleman making the presentation. How many additional daycare slots are going to be made available to our community as a result of this proposal?
License is going to end up being one twenty and they have fifty now, so.
So it'll be going to all levels, from fifty to one twenty.
Uh, the increase of seventy.
Which is a, which, which fulfills a substantial need in our community, um, if I'm not mistaken. Is that why this proposal is coming forward?
Correct, there's, um, uh, especially from the medical buildings close by here, there's very high demand in this area.
Does anyone, or do you have any idea of how many, uh? Slots are actually needed to satisfy the need in our community?
Overall throughout the town?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I believe it's substantial, but I don't know.
Um, I run a ratio for every, uh, my name is April Lucasic. I'm the owner of the Bright and Early Childcare Center chain. And I run a, a demographic study to see how many slots, um, are needed in any particular town, and I base it on the amount of children. That are under the age of five and also under the age of three, so it will. Speak to infant toddler as well as preschool, and I've come up with a formula that's a ratio and Guilford. Probably needs closer to two hundred, I would say, so trying to tap into a. You know, a good portion of it, but it, it, the need seems to be. Based on the amount of licensed slots right now and how many children are in that demographic.
Thank you for that answer.
Thanks. Um, Steve Natick, do you have any, anything you want to go over for this application?
Yeah, I, I put together a memo and I think the applicant addressed a couple of items, but I just wanted to share my review comments. Briefly, and maybe the applicant can address some of them. Um, and if he did revise the plan, share how, how they were incorporated. Um, number one was the site parking. Uh, the proposed parking layout that was shown, um, the. Plan, floor plans and elevation sheet A one drawn by Nelson and Edwards stated five four does not match the site plan for proposed site plan for addition page two of, two of three. Drawn by Chris Kulo Engineering dated five, three, twenty-three, um, there, there appears to be stacked parking on the. On the layout of the site plan, and there's a different orientation for. The, uh, architectural plan, so they don't seem to be speaking to each other. Secondly, the site plan does not identify site parking, uh, doesn't include any kind of parking count other than those spaces which are included in front of the building addition. And it appears that there may be a shared parking arrangement and an easement between number four forty-one Boston Street and number four twenty-one Boston Street. And I'd like some clarification on this. Uh, and I think the plan should be revised to include a total parking count, um, and on that, on that note as well. Um, it seems to be a, a pretty significant addition to the building. Um, and not a lot of parking is being added, so I think it's worth exploring how many employees are going to be, uh, on the property at one time to make sure there is adequate parking, um. The app, the applicant did state that. The use is not listed in the parking chart, and I don't believe it is. Um, but I think the commission should ensure that there's enough parking spaces on the site for the employees that are going to be added. Um, comments two through five on my memo. The site plan was not stamped. It looks like the new one that was just being shared is. Um, number three, there was no landscape plan that's required by zoning regulations, section seventy-five M. Looks like that may have been added here at, at the, uh, new plan set. Um, there is no lighting plan in accordance with section seventy-five O, uh, they should be revised to include one. And I would recommend, um, that the design plan be reviewed by the design advisory committee. And that building elevation should show some additional detail to ensure that the new addition is going to match what the existing building is. And that building elevation should show some additional detail to ensure that the new addition is going to match what the existing building is.
Good, good.
So, you know, we're going from 60 students to 130. That's, I have no doubt, I have no doubt there's significant demand. My wife works at a pre-K through 8 school, and it's not the daytime parking that's the issue. It's the pickup and drop-off. And it seems completely inadequate to have that number of students getting dropped off and picked up with teacher parking and no turnaround plan, no design plan for, you know, a drop-off circle, whatever that might be. It just, it looks like a formula for a parking disaster.
Would you like to speak to your timing in terms of pickup and drop-off?
Sure.
Because it is different from K through 8.
No, it all depends. I mean, like, you know, some little kids might get picked up at noon, but full-day kids that are going to be there from 7:30 to 3:30, 4:30. But there's always going to be a crunch at, you know, whatever the pickup times usually are. I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not a random, it's usually not a random set of drop-offs and pickups. It's usually pretty well orchestrated as to what time programming would start and then what time it would end.
So we'll be, I'll be expanding the hours to 6:30 to 6:00, and the drop-offs will start 6:30 in the morning, and they will typically end by about 9 o'clock. So you have three and, you know, 7:30, 8:30, two and a half hours, and, and they will start to be picked up at 4:00 to 6:00. So you've got two solid hours at the end of the day. So, and they are in very quick. I mean, I just have a center in Southbury that has about the same parking and the same license. It actually flows very well, and I have not, this is my ninth school. So it is comparable to other schools that I have already, and we just built one in Middlebury. And it has, you know, the one row of parking, and there's some up the side. So it actually reminds me of this, and with the expanded hours, and also a lot of children or siblings. So even though it may sound like this many more children, there, there may be one parent picking up two and sometimes even three children. So it, I believe that number of parking should be, will be ample.
Yeah, so they will take a look at the parking certainly based off of Steve's comments. I can also attest that with my two kids that are in daycare, there's a max of three other parents, maybe three mother parents there whenever I go to pick up or drop off. It is not the crush that you see at the elementary.
How do you get into and out of the parking lot? Could you enter one way and leave another? I'm thinking about this.
Well, the way it's been existing for 40 years, they do come in and out of the same entrance. So that's what has been working there for all of this time. So I would imagine it would continue to work well. There's lots of turnaround space at the end where it's the shared pavement between the two buildings, which has almost no cars in it. And so if, you know, apparently shouldn't end up bottlenecked there, and if they do need to pull out and turn around, there's plenty of space at the other end. And so the one entrance exit seems, will be fine.
Can you show us on the map where that is?
So there is an over-wide driveway that comes from here that also has. There's a very deep pavement there here. There are reciprocal accesses in the property. Student mentioned that a possible shared apartment. Did we find any of that? There are certainly access easements that are shared. So again, this driveway is fairly wide, so, you know, cars can then pick up and go back.
Exit to Soundview, or where there is only a blinking light.
Right, coming out of the recorder.
Yes.
Oh, so it's over here.
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions, pro-questions?
What causes sensitive teeth? Did you know that the tooling pauses of irritated gums can weaken enamel? Switch to new sets of eyes to give them a level. I'll take care of three bottles, just one toothpaste.
Good question.
I know you mentioned the two other facilities that your, your company operates. What, what are the employee counts on, on those businesses and, and the student counts? And how many parking spaces are you utilizing right now? I mean, I'll do some homework on this on our end, but I'm curious to know.
In my Middletown Center, I believe I have 35 spaces. I have eight other centers, not two, eight. This will be number nine. And in Middlebury, we just, we just built out Middlebury.
I think there are 16 teachers' school, and there are 20 spaces.
So 36 is, usually 35 as an average is very comparable for any of my locations. And some of my locations have 160 kids, like down in Nyhantick.
Sure. What I'm trying to understand is the specific size of those facilities and how it correlates with the parking. I, I understand that there may be a general size or.
Yeah, I don't have that exact data for you. I certainly, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay.
But that's information you can get.
Yeah.
And is there a shared parking arrangement, or is it just an access easement?
I did not find on record any shared parking agreement. But, but I did find the access agreement, so.
Okay.
So I don't, not sure exactly where that came from, but.
That's a question that I had because I saw the easement, and I saw a very connected parking lot. Thank you.
Any questions from the public in a moment? Do we have any town staff? While he's bringing that up, any other questions from commissioners? I just mentioned that when you're doing your lighting plan, take a look at the regs. They're typically full cutoffs for certain.
The wall pack of that store, we did add, it is full cutoff, it's 3,000K.
Since we already went over Steve's memo, I'll start with Kevin's. Larry, do you want to take this one?
Sure. To Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, Environment Planner, RE Coastal Site Plan and Special Permit 441 Baltimore Street, Guilford, Connecticut, 06437. Assessor Map 48 Lot 52. The applicant plans on constructing a 5,380 square foot addition to connect to, to connect the two, the existing daycare buildings. The proposed stormwater management practices will be, will consist of roof leaders from the addition, discharging to a rain garden. Property located coastal area, management area. Postal resource policies that for the property are thorough lands and flood hazard area. Plans for the project have sedimentation and erosion control procedures that are, that are in compliance with 7273-97B subsection 6 of the zoning regulations. No planting plan was submitted as part of the application to show the number and type of plants to be planted in the rain garden. In addition, the plans show a number of mature trees being removed from the property. New trees should be planted along Soundview Road and between the parking lot and the playgrounds. I recommend the following conditions of approval in order to. No lighting plan was included in the application. Exterior lighting should be dark spot compliant. Cooler temperature of light fixtures should be no greater than 3,000K. Planting plan should be submitted detailing the number and type of plants being installed in the rain garden. In addition, the planting plan should show the replanting of trees along Soundview Road and between the parking lot and the playground. 3, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officers shall be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any site work. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silk fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement. 4, to assure compliance of the stormwater management system in accordance to section 273-75.F of the zoning code. The applicant shall file a maintenance covenant on the land records as required by section 273-75.F, Stormwater Management Subsection 7, parentheses, maintenance covenants, closed parentheses, of the Town of Guilford zoning code. The maintenance covenant shall be written. And operation manual for all stormwater management systems located at the subject site. The manual should provide provisions for yearly inspection, maintenance of the stormwater system, and yearly reports to the town engineer. The maintenance schedule should include, but not be limited to, weekly, monthly, and quarterly inspections of the property for litter, monitoring the dumpster, outside storage areas, monitoring of the catch basins, and maintenance of the rain garden. Maintenance plan needs to provide a statement that the stormwater management plan will be reviewed annually so that inspection slash maintenance requirements. That any dangers to the plan would require the approval of the town engineer. And as a bill, sorry, and quote, as built drawing, plus completed stormwater system pairs in accordance with sections 273-75.F, Stormwater Management Subsection 6, parentheses.
Great. The comments are really ready. Do you have one for the help?
Yeah, we can make it a little clearer on this. Okay, to the NC Commission from Shirley Mickens, RS, dated June 7, 2023, 3441 Boston Street, Map 48 Lot Addition. An engineer plan was submitted to the Health Department for an addition at the above address. The Health Department will be working with the Connecticut Office, Early Childhood, and Cradle to Crayons to increase the number of students. The proposed engineering plan addition involves the installation of two new subsurface sewage disposal systems to accommodate the increase in use. The engineer plan will be approved pending additional soil tests. The past soil testing indicated predominantly sand and gravel with infiltration. So the Health Department sees no substantial change to the plan. Any changes made to the engineer plan will need to be submitted to the Health Department before we view Shirley Mickens, RS.
So engineering, we already. All right, in that case, I will bring it up. That'll be the last time.
To Planning and Zoning Commission from Dennis Crazie, Mayor, RE 441 Boston Streets. The project includes a rain garden, a new roof area, stormwater management. This is the only landscaping improvement shown for the entire site. This site will have all many trees removed, removal, replacement. This site is on a prominent corner on State Seating Highway, 246. And in the past couple of years, trees in the property of Longfrost Street were cut down, only stumps remain. As part of a recent sidewalk project, the town planted two maple trees along Boston Street Flunge. But a project this size should include a landscape plan, including new trees and removal of green stuff. The rain garden discharge pipe shown to connect to the town's catch basin in the road will require a permit from the Engineering Department prior to the start.
Yes, you can have some already from your presentation. Okay.
And with that, the tree in the corner, you said you had to relocate the substances.
The tank too close to the existing tree.
Yes, too close to. Yeah.
Where would you move it?
Actually, we'll move it under, it can be, just try to get it out of the root system.
All right. Any other questions from commissioners? Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Has there been any type of a traffic study done on the current volume versus the proposed volume?
There is not a traffic study.
There is not a traffic study.
Thank you.
All right, if we have no more questions, commissioners will ask for questions from the public. Over there.
I know when parents are dropping off and picking up children, safety can be an issue. Just, you know, to make sure the parking is arranged so that the teachers are in one area enough and you're not going to have an issue with parents in a hurry coming in, children going across the park.
Sorry, can I have your name?
Charlie Lord.
So in all of the centers, I always have the teachers parked the furthest away so that parents can park right in front, especially mothers and fathers with car seats so that they can bring them right in. And I agree with you completely. I don't want any two-year-olds, three-year-olds, one-year-olds running across a parking lot, which is why we also put the playgrounds right up against so that when they leave the school to go to the playground, they're entering directly, you know, into the safe area. And so, yes, the staff is always parked the furthest away and leaving as many spots available for parents as possible.
Any other questions from the public? Would anyone like to speak in support of this application? And anyone like to speak in opposition to this application?
Question, if you don't mind.
Question.
Actually, my question is, my fellow member, Phil, did you bring up the idea of a traffic study to, because I would like to see one? Or would you like to have a discussion about that? How would, how would that get prompted if we wanted such a study?
Honestly, I'm just concerned that there's not a massive expansion of the parking in relation to the expansion of staff and students. And, you know, what is the current, you know, traffic flow look like? And then, again, projecting that forward based upon increased student and staffing, what does that look like? You know, I just, again, it's not like there's a turnaround circle and you're dropping kids off in a specific area. There are defined parking spaces. And so I think, I mean, I wish I could see the future, but, I mean, it just sounds to me like it's going to be a congestion nightmare for parents and a problem. I mean, they have not exponentially expanded the size of the parking the way they've done with the capacity of the building.
I, I would say that a turnaround, when there is a horseshoe, is my least favorite parking situation because somebody comes in and they want to leave, and they're coming out, and the parent's getting out of the car. I think that's the most dangerous is when you have like a U shape where parents are getting out. And, you know, if a child gets out the wrong side of the car, they're in the line of traffic. So I actually prefer for safety to have them lined up like this. I think all my centers are actually lined up this way. The other thing I would say is I know that the square footage of the building connecting looks large. It does. There's a gym in there which actually doesn't increase the amount of children. It's not licensed for a classroom. It's licensed for a gym, so. So the children from the existing two buildings have the opportunity to go into a gym or a meditation room or a dance room, things like that. So some of the space in there is just expanding the curriculum experience for the children. And there's also a whole reception hub in there as well. And as far as the amount of staff that are getting increased, we're putting the preschool children there. And so it's one teacher to, you know, ten students. And so you're really only looking at seven extra teachers. And they will also, um, be on a schedule where some come in at six thirty and some come in at nine. So it's not seven parking spaces all at once. So it, it, to me, it looks a little deceiving, like, wow, that's a lot of space. How are you going to handle the parking that would line up with that amount of square footage? But there are some components that. Make it less than sort of the visual impact.
I, I would like something provided by the, the applicants that, that explains how many employees are going to be on the site? How many were existing in, in the current configuration? How many students are you going to be having? Uh, what, what are your other sites projecting, um, based on their size? And, and what does the ITE say about parking counts for daycares? Um, because I haven't heard any, any actual numbers about this. I think the points you've made about the horseshoe are very reasonable, but I think there's some additional information that needs to be provided here.
Yes, that was to, to, um. Do you want to say? All right, uh, so I see that we have a question from Matt Hoy. Great, Mr. Hoy, use your hands up. Who's yours?
Let me, I'm you. I, I will, once again, and, and I, I appreciate the opportunity to speak here. I would urge the applicant to satisfy the concerns that the board has relative to the parking. Uh, for the simple reason that there is a significant shortage of daycare slots available in our community. In fact, I've had, uh, substantial conversations with, uh, Liza Petro from the Guilford Foundation. About how we might be able to direct, uh, American Rescue Plan funds to assist in the, uh, uh, support and development. Of daycare slots for the community members. So, um, I, I would urge the applicants to, uh, work with the board, uh, with the commission and, uh, to satisfy the concerns. Because, uh, this is a desperate need in our community. And if this is an opportunity to service our community, um, uh. We, we should make every effort we can to make sure it happens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very welcome, also live, that has a. So now when I see, um, it's just raise your hand, so. Help, please speak.
Yes, um, I am a, a great aunt of one of the students that is at the center right now. And when I go and pick up the student, um, every parking place is taken already. And that's with the number being at fifty. So I don't understand if they're not changing the size of the parking lot. How can you have enough parking for a hundred and twenty students? That's my statement.
So, may I respond? So two things about that, with the expanded hours, everything is going to get diluted. Um, and the staffing that they have right now, um. Is not going to be the same staffing model that we use. Um, the, the absentee owner, and I've been working with him on staffing for a few weeks now, he's, he's been struggling and I've been helping. He's had like two teachers in a room with eight children when there should be, you know, one with ten. And, you know, with a degreed teacher who is, you know. Educated in curriculum and, and that type of thing. So I think with the expanded hours, that's going to really stretch out the, um. Amount of spaces and while the staff right now is really full, more full than it should be, it will increase, but it won't. Won't increase on what it is right now, it's almost like one and a half times versus doubling it or anything like that.
Anything else from, uh? All right, should we, any other questions from commissioners to, uh, to us, to our, uh, July twenty-first meeting?
So, uh, direct, what's your question?
Sure. Sorry, June twenty-first.
June twenty-first.
June twenty-first.
Uh, there was a recommendation from Steve, going to decide.
Yep.
Is it a recommendation, is that a fact?
Have a conversation with Steve. If, um, if they have a meeting that you can.
It was on the last month, July last.
Right, we'll just have conversations. Uh, so I have a motion from Ted, or a second.
Second.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, Larry, go on.
Yes.
Have a card?
Yes.
I say, yes. Bill Taylor?
Yes.
Love Johnson?
Yes.
All right, I'll bring it.
You got it, Tom.
One vote, it stands, uh, oh, yes.
I was just going to say.
To our next meeting.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Next, I want to add to this town appeal for playing zoning commission, application for adoption of opposed April thirteen, twenty twenty-three draft zoning regulations and amended zoning map. Continued from our May seventh meeting, um. Want to do a start?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one of the commission members, you know, that, uh, with the, uh, staff and I have been working on a great exhibit list of all of the correspondence that has come in. We're going to use this to refer to documents, be sure that the commission member will share this with you at the appropriate time. Make sure you have all of our materials in the record. We'll also be using this as a foundation, put the comments together, the comment list, if you will. Uh, sometimes some of the correspondence or testimony that's been submitted covers multiple topics, so we're going to have to break it up, reorganize it itself. So I just want you to know that we're monitoring all the stuff that's coming in, keeping track of it, et cetera. Uh, to try to make your job easier, uh, when the time comes. I think we did notice as part of the, uh, work and review on the regulations, that there may be two additional issues that I would like to bring to your attention. One of those is related to statutory change related to EV chargers. And our regulations as crafted right now today, it says that you have to install a station. The statute requires a commission. Uh, as a result of the addition of thirty or more spaces to establish the infrastructure. And the difference is the station is the actual charger on the ground, whereas the infrastructure is the conduits, panel capacity, wiring, et cetera. But this, the charger doesn't have to be installed. So it's just something that we want to bring to your attention and ask if you want to stay with what's in the regulation or follow the statute. That will happen. There was also a conversation with Jamie before she left with regard to the density standards for the conservation development. And so we'll be taking another look at that, and so you may see something from me in the comments. Um, if you will, uh, just raising this issue for, for deliberations, uh, once we make sure we track down all the correspondence. Thank you.
Uh, just a couple items, uh, before we move to public comments on it, just the, the general process. Uh, this is the public hearing for this item. I don't expect us to get to ten thirty, but there is a hard cap at ten thirty for public comment on the site. Um, and the other thing I'll mention is just to kind of reiterate the process, we had a public hearing, um, two or three weeks ago. Uh, we'd like the comments, we'd like the comments on the website, um, on the town website, you can, um, access that comments website. Um, and we'll collect all comments from tonight's meeting as well. All those are going the, on the spreadsheet that Glenn just mentioned. Um, once the public hearing is closed, uh, whenever that happens. Uh, we expect the next meeting will be presented by Glenn, that full list of comments to go through. Um, and. However long that process takes, uh, we'll be doing that, making sure we've gone through all the comments, uh, before we make it soon. So, uh, with that said, we'll, we'll go through, uh, open it up for public, uh, comments. Um, similar to what we did at the last public hearing, you know, this is more of you presenting your comments about, um, about the regulations. To us and to Glenn. Um, so if you have general comments, that's great. If you have specific ones, just, uh, try to speak to which, which section, uh, you're, you're speaking to. Um, other than that, I'll, 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 uh, print the list, and I'll list the program that we're. Can I get one, I'll go over there.
Um, so if you go to the webpage where comments are listed, you'll see a handful of comments that don't seem all that many. Um, uh, but if you read the fine print to the, uh, left of that. Uh, we couldn't fit all the comments in that place, but there's a link that takes you to the complete set of comments. So if you might have overlooked that, there is a link that gets you to one hundred percent of the comments.
That's very funny, thank you, Larry. Uh, any other, any other items from commissioners before we open up the public comment? All right. Um, want to pull somebody from here in the row? Again, please, um, state your name and address for the record. And the microphone is up here, so if you feel like you can't project, then maybe you can come and sit in the front seat here.
Um, we could take, it starts and go down, so. Uh, Christie, if you wanted to say.
Yeah, yes, um. I, I have something to read, do we have three minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you say your name and address?
Christie Rubin-Dance, uh, two twenty-one, Bitchell Road, North Guilford, Connecticut. And, um, I'd like to introduce myself as both a private citizen, living in, resident of North Guilford. Um, but I've also been an active member on the Board for How We Mean, in section, in September of two thousand fourteen. Um, that's other people, yeah. So, um, and I am in favor of adopting the, the present, um, proposed P and Z plans as they are. Because I feel we have a strong commitment from the town to support, um. Living with them for a while and, and testing them in the waters and, and being able to review and amend them as we come up against. Abolism or obstacles, things that will seem to be changed. So I mean, support, I support them, the adoption as they are. With, um, what I would call some clarifications and two clarifications. Um, that I would like to make, um, are addressed in, or stated in the sections eleven, uh, six, sorry, six, eleven, B. Uh, one and six, eleven, B, two, uh. Which address, um, the question about portable housing units as defined by the state of Connecticut. Which are deemed restricted units. And, um, we've proposed in the, in the regulations that, uh, two or more dwelling units be included. Um, uh, as, uh, the provision for affordable housing use, the basis for that. Um. And then we get to how this percentage of. Uh, what percent are we going to require of, um. The developer to provide affordable housing? And that has been ratted around between ten and twenty percent. And it is included in the, in the proposal at twelve percent. And this, uh, percentage seems reasonable and, uh, to the people that I've talked to and the research that I've done. To try to come up with, with a good, um. You know, solution. Um. So twelve percent, I feel, is not unreasonable, it's far lower than the twenty percent in the incentive zones. Which are still preserved, the, the portable housing is not impacted in the, in the, um, incentive zones. Um, it does not impinge on units per acre limitation of other zones. And what it does, uh, mirror or parallel is the adjustments to density limitations that a developer may achieve by dedicating, for instance, land to the conservation. Um, trust, land trust. Um. So in terms of the percentage required, twelve percent, um. Is a little bit more than what some developers may have, you know, they may be going like, oh, ten percent. But, um, with only a ten percent. Uh, inclusion are progress toward the states, uh, toward our belief in doing what's right. And the state's goal of ten percent. Every time you build a new market rate unit, even if it's a single, uh, one soft private family, you know, I'm building a house on these four acres. That erodes our, our, um, progress toward a goal of even ten percent. So, uh, we've experienced that in the past, um. Few months when we saw our achieved, uh, affordable housing at two point eight percent, dropped down to two point one percent. Was. Um, and also like to address this general fear that, uh, having a percentage of twelve percent. Uh, affordable housing will scare developers off, but when I've talked with, um, the, the town consultants, um, yes, thank you, pleased to meet you. And, um, with, uh, um, developers that I was referred to, um. That, that, this, uh, twelve percent has not seemed ultimately unreasonable, if I could characterize our conversation that way. Um, we have written into the, into that six point eleven section. Um, options that incentivize developers, including things like some flexibility, like building affordable housing on site, building it offsite. Um, or having an option to pay a fee in lieu. Which gets me to the next portion that I know the commissioners had, um. Some concerns about, uh, whi- which is how, how do we calculate a fee in lieu? And after a lot of conversation, both within our group and, um, on sidebar with MJ here. Um, and talking with the other people I've, uh, mentioned, um. It seems that. This helps familiarize the, the, the feeling of being onerous, like you have to build something where you. You know, pay an enormous fee. And we have calculation, um, in the regulations as they're personally written, it's based on. Uh, I think the wording has constructive, construction fee. But, um, after hearing some of the feedback from the conversations. I've had, um, MJ and I came up with this idea to tie it to, um. The square footage, uh, calculations that are already existing in the. In, in the plan for, uh, the permitting fee schedule. So if I can just, you know, point that out. Um, so. Sorry, I. Did do this, but if we tie it to this number, which is, um, part of their, the, the permitting fee, the cap ratio. And, um. And we take the twelve percent of that. So that's a permitting, and then there's, I, I'm referring to more detail about how, um. You know, that would be applied for multi-family where there might be shared common spaces.
For, for, it means you can write it up, and.
Not much, uh, 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 wait, can I do that?
Yeah. Just write it up.
Okay.
Okay.
So just as a point of clarification, you're, you're speaking on behalf of the Affordable Housing Committee?
I am speaking as myself, who is a very active member of the Affordable Housing Committee. And we haven't actually met on this specific, uh. At this specific detail level at this point, because everything is time compressed, so. Um. I've spoken with, spoken with Larry and MJ and Matt Hoy and.
It, it just sounds like a statement that's coming from the committee, which is perfectly fine, I just think it needs to be clarified.
No, no, it's, it's me, but I am also disclosing that I'm on a committee and, um, doing this. Uh. Out of my passion for the affordable housing cause, if you will. Yes.
All right, um, also, notice anyone that's on the Zoom call, go ahead and raise your hand, yeah, if you'd like to speak, and we'll. Yeah, if you'd like to speak, and we'll bounce back and forth, being here in person as well as online. I haven't seen your name, he's on online yet, though, so we'll go to the next person on the list here.
All right, so Mary. That's the end of the year, is that?
Yeah, right here, but I don't know.
Hi, my name is Mary Jo Castor, 131 Boston Street. I'm also a partner at Campaign Castor Arms. We have 15 active projects at Guilford in various stages of construction, and we do zoning reviews for all of them. My partner is Russell Campaign, who has written a number of individual memos on topics that I tend to agree with, but I wanted to come tonight and speak for myself as well. I've been involved in town planning since 2003. I was on the planning committee from 2003 until 2015. 2004, we're a growth management strategy. Yeah, okay, and we wanted to work on that, though. And then in 2009 to 2015, I co-chaired the Plan of Conservation and Development Committee with Shelley Green to do the update on that. And that took us, you know, six years, which was not what we thought it was going to take. But in terms of trying to balance conservation and development, essential town character, and set a clear set of goals to gather public input, that's what it took. So I appreciate what you're doing here tonight, because I know it's been a long haul. And I think that's, that's just how it is. Since 2014, I've been on the Housing Economic and Development Plan Committee, also known as the Affordable Housing Committee, with Kristi Rubin-Duns. And now we have several members of P and Z join us, which we're delighted about. And as you heard, we're still passionate about trying to find ways to do affordable housing in town. I'd like to stress here that the only thing we are not making more of is land and that we need to be very deliberate about how we develop and protect it. And to this point, I feel like there has not been adequate review or public comment for the topics that have come up between the December draft that were pending in April, and we said, we're just going to include them, which includes affordable housing, conservation subdivisions, and storm margins. I've heard multiple times that perfect is the enemy of the good. But I just want to say, I think that is a context-dependent phrase, that in medicine, engineering, and aviation, we would not accept that. And land use is an experiment that is not easily changed. This update needs to seriously consider both our undeveloped land and proposed developments impacts as having significant benefits and costs that are directly affected by this code. The move fast and break things motto should not be what we're trying to do here with the planning zone code. Specific to housing, I'm in favor of housing, but I do not think these regulations will encourage it. I think 12% is too much if the developer can just move to Bradford or Madison. We just had the state, you know, deliberate on the fair share. I don't know how much you guys have been following that, but that ended up not passing the TOD. I think it's going to get kicked to the next time either, and I hope that's something our housing committee needs to study. But also, I'm still confused about how we calculate the fee in lieu of. Kristi, I have been working on something that I think is good, but I think you really need to know that something. I'm glad to hear about the update on how public comments are going to be consolidated and considered. I'm looking forward to that. And I would love it if, when you deliberate, you did give some verbalization to the intent of some of the changes, such as proportionality of open space, the change in the sum of side setback calculations, the projections for setbacks, parking, goals for the rezoning of the lawn, and the massive bulk changes from FAR to K and S. The bulk is really what the middle of that is. And I also just wanted to say, I think for me, because I use this code all the time, people have approached me and asked for sort of clarification, because it's very hard to engage with this material if you're not familiar with it. And I'm sure you guys have heard this, too, that people are not used to, you know, zoning, you know, they want to be involved. It's kind of difficult to read. And so I do hope that there might be, you know, another effort just to clarify the goals and intentions of the major changes. We're supposed to keep that to three minutes, but I also need more about this that maybe I'll write down.
We both have Alan, is Alan Walker still here?
Michael Scott.
Thank you very much. Michael Scott, 593 Towner Swamp Road, on the Licensed Architects, five degrees in architecture and urban design. So I go for planning and zoning, thanks to sit on Guilford zoning subcommittee. Good evening, thank you for taking my comments again. I'm very concerned about the decision for the town. Do the members of this commission understand the proposed zoning codes' impact on your own properties in Guilford? And so do you understand the impact on your neighbors' properties? I would ask you that, until you do, I don't see how you can personally commend or recommend for their adoptions. I looked into this zoning codes' impact on my neighbor's parcel, former Sullivan Orchard property, scheduled to be rezoned M U B. The Sullivan parcel is 150, 105 acres, or 4.6 million square feet. If adopted, the following projects could arrive before the commission, simply as a site plan approval. A 1,150,000 square foot retail building with another 700,000 square feet of parking. This building could also, as a simple site plan application, be a clinic, office building, or any combination of the other 20 uses approvable by site plan. 1.1 million square feet is five Guilford high schools or a shopping mall the width of the town green, stretching from the rear wall of CVS on Route 1 to the rear wall of Paige's Hardware Store. You might think that the Sullivan Orchard parcel is large enough with plenty of space, but this 1.1 million square foot building, according to the bulk standards, can be within 75 feet of its property line and 50 feet off of my road. 50 feet is less than two of these rooms. Four stories, 1.1 million square feet, simply by site plan approval. More importantly, that 1.1 million square foot building could be 600 dwelling units by site plan permit. There is no place on that parcel, even as large as this is, that 600 dwelling units can exist without affecting my and my neighbor's property, Route 1 traffic, and most of this community is experienced at the west end of Guilford. Now, by special permit, because the parcel is within a quarter mile of a bus route, it can qualify for the I H D incentive, sadly, to the prospective developer. If they tried to maximize to the 20 units per acre, they'd be left with 2,000 units of a poultry 430 square feet each. Affordable, but not necessarily marketable. Nevertheless, to motivated developer, 1,000 units of 1,100 square feet is achievable by special permit. The current zone, MUC1, allows for a maximum building area of 100,000 square feet, less than one-tenth of what these codes propose. With MUC1, all housing, all housing is by special permit and is age-restricted. And I would say that those are important governors on parcels as specific as a Sullivan Orchard. Now, your consultant may tell you that these projects still have to go past design advisory. And while I respect that Guilford Board and the work that they do, their purview, especially on site plans, is extremely limited. Your town staff might tell you that 1.1 million square feet of buildings at densities of 10 units per acre are nearly impossible to execute in Guilford with our sewer avoidance policy. But that is using a temporary engineering problem to establish and protect our town's land use policy. In my 27 years of practicing architecture, I know how quickly engineering changes, especially in septic design. You might tell me that it still has to pass site plan permit. But that's not necessarily a public hearing, and I have sat on your side of the table and felt the scarcity of arrows in my quiver when presented with poorly conceived plan. Last meeting, this commission stated that these codes, once adopted, can be easily tweaked and adjusted, and frankly, I do agree. However, once adopted, a site plan application or something worse will arrive before you, before you understand how woefully conceived this rezoning is. I've seen no evidence of our town staff or our consultant running an analysis of this code's impact on the built environment in our community, be it a physical plan or a G I S-based analysis. I am probably overly pessimistic about what will happen on the Sullivan parcel. That property has been underused for decades. However, maybe some developer buys up four contiguous parcels on Whitfield or Fair Street and erects a four-story, four-unit apartment building visible from the green. Maybe it's your neighbor's parcel, and maybe your neighbor will plan a nice buffer for you on your property line. Years of efforts have gone into this new zoning code. I'm sorry that you are asked to endorse it. No one has taken it out for a test drive before you are asked to operate it at highway speeds. If they have, let's see that effort to determine whether it represents the thoughtful solution to density and affordable housing that Guilford deserves. Until you can answer definitively that you know what is in this code for you and your neighbors and for me and my neighbors, please do not put your name behind.
Anyone else here who wanted to speak with name?
I wrote at the bottom. I didn't realize I had it.
Okay, John Newman?
Yes, I didn't realize I had to sign up, but I'll know that for next time. John Newman, 590 Towner Swamp Road, Guilford, I was neighbor, and I won't try to top what he said, so I'm going to go in a completely different direction. I'd like to thank the committee for the opportunity to offer my comments regarding the proposed changes to the planning and zoning regulations. I'm here this evening to speak neither in support of nor in opposition to the proposed changes, but to request an extension of the public comment period. In order to engage a larger portion of the Guilford residents and to give the commission and staff the opportunity to make the proposed plans understandable to the general public. Sorry, I've been writing and rewriting that. My suggestions are as follows: proactive communication. I understand that the commission met the minimum notification standards. However, I would suggest that the commission reach out proactively using a variety of channels, including email, mail, social media, and the town's mass notification system to let the general populace know that these meetings are taking place. It goes without saying, the land use decisions, including changes to planning and zoning regulations, are fundamentally political decisions. In democratic societies, decisions that significantly impact the public must have public input. Without this input, decisions may not can't even read my writing, may not reflect the needs and desires of the community. When a large portion of the residents are involved in the process and understand the changes, it can further legitimize the decisions. If people feel their voices have been heard, they are more likely to accept and support the final outcome, even if it's not exactly what they wanted. Increased public input can ensure the changes are fair and equitable. Without the public's input, there's a risk that the changes may disproportionately benefit certain groups at the expense of others. Name this next one, dissemination of the plans. Use clear and plain language avoiding technical jargon or legalistic language. Create a clear and easy-to-understand educational materials about the changes. This could include frequently asked questions, renderings showing the proposed changes versus current regulations, and simple but complete summaries of the proposed changes. Be transparent about the process, explain exactly why the changes are proposed and who would be affected. Acknowledge feedback received, how it influenced the world changes, and if certain suggestions were not adopted, explain why. This is a tough one. And finally, I would suggest the commission temporarily pause the process until a new town planner is appointed. And then I have a question. Will the number and quality of comments that have been submitted necessitate the reopening of public comment period? That's right. Or you can email me. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, just thank you for your comments. And just with regard to the last comment, I think the regulations are sort of like any application submitted by an applicant. Comments are being made by the community, we're titillating all of these. We can make modifications to the regulations to address these comments. If we were to make a significant change that had not been incorporated into the regulations, I would perhaps advise the commission that we should maybe restart the public hearing process. But if we're responding to comments and incorporating what the community has suggested, even though some of those changes may be directions, if they're moving backwards, if you will, from some of the changes that we've proposed, that's what the community has requested. I don't think we need a new application process for that. So I'll coach and advise you through this as that happens, because I think we want to do the right thing for the community in terms of responding to that. So I think we're in comfortable territory at the present time, and as our discussions unfold, we'll talk about that further.
All right. I see heads raised on Zoom. So Joseph Walensky was the first one to raise, so it's okay.
Great, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Great, thank you, sir. I'm in favor of affordable housing.
Please state your name and name and address.
Yes, sir. Joseph Walensky, Towner Swamp Road. I'm in favor of affordable housing, but I am strongly opposed to high-density, large-scale housing projects. One of the major concerns for high-density housing in Guilford, such as the current large proposal for the Sullivan property on Moose Hill, is the probability of surface water and groundwater contamination from overburdened, high-density septic systems. Connecticut Public Health Code requires that failed septic systems be repaired. But the definition of failure is often subjective, and some septic systems are more difficult to evaluate than others, meaning that unless there's a visible health threat, such as pooling surface contamination or backflow into a house, there's really no legal requirement to repair an improperly working septic system. So repairs often are not made until the area has become distinctly odiferous, which indicates that the system is already a health threat. If high-density housing is built on Moose Hill, the health of surrounding neighbors are put at unnecessary risk since they are all down gradient of groundwater beneath a new high-density septic system. Imagine having 120 apartments placed on the apex of Moose Hill, overlooking your front yard. That's what we are faced with here on Towner Swamp Road if high-density housing is approved. At the very least, I recommend respectfully, the committee, your committee, consider requiring additional space on high-density sites be allowed for future upgrades and expansion of septic systems at high-density sites in the case of failure. Two septic systems on our road have failed, and they were both built to code. It's just the soil in this area is poor. Furthermore, in areas that were once formed, such as the Sullivan property, steps need to be taken proactively and subsequent to development to evaluate water quality, to assess for residual pesticides and herbicides, both are known neurotoxins. They can negatively impact adults, children, and embryos during critical stages of development. I thank you for your time and for your service to this community.
So next, the next person to move to the next person. You're apparently muted, so. You're ready to speak, David?
Is this for Em Griffin?
Yes. Yes.
Great, thank you. I actually have it in my daughter's login, so I apologize. My name's Ashley Griffin, and I just want to speak briefly only because I just learned about this today. And I don't have a lot of in-depth knowledge about it yet, but I definitely already feel strongly that the Guilford residents aren't really completely aware or even aware at all or informed of these potential regulations that are being suggested. And I disagree with them. I feel very concerned that there's a lot of, lot of natural assets in Guilford and established residential neighborhoods that will be adversely affected by any new regulations that I've heard about. Because they don't seem to be very mindful of already well-established neighborhood communities and as, and as well as the unique, not, as well as the unique natural and historical assets within our town. And I think something like that can easily and irreversibly damage the quality and the character of our town. Guilford's unique, and I don't want to see any more cement coming in and somebody trying to profit as does happen because it helps them make money, but it hurts our town. I feel like the residents of Guilford, most of them are completely unaware of what's going on, and this isn't fair, that they're not appropriately informed, appropriately informed about things like this. I don't want to see our town get hurt and irreversibly damaged. So I disagree with the proposed regulations and think that the community and the public needs to be informed and be able to participate in anything like this going forward as far as building, et cetera, within our town. And that's just my two cents quickly without having had much time to think in depth about the details I'd like to speak about. Thank you.
What is your address? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Your address?
My address is 1350 Boston Post Road, Guilford. You're welcome.
Next is Todd Anderson.
Hi, sorry, my computer was frozen for a minute there. Todd Anderson from Anderson Engineering Surveying Associates, 1054 Boston Post Road here in Guilford, Connecticut. In, in reiterating what, um, I forget what the architect's name was, Michael, I think. I agree with everything he stated as well. A few things that, you know, I, early on, years ago, I was a member of the committee to rewrite these regulations. And the original intent was to make the regulations better and less obtrusive for properties who were, um, unfortunately made mandated to, uh, succumb to more stringent regulations, i.e. the R8 zoning, where a lot of subdivisions were approved under R5 and R6 zoning. Then they were placed in R8, and I've gone through numerous zoning board of appeals applications for those properties. So I want to commend the commission first off on realizing that a lot of these properties in town are in zones that they shouldn't be in. So the part of the regulation where there's concessions for those properties, I want to commend the powers that be, um, that change the regulations to make those more compliant. The parts of the regulations that I don't agree with are, um, R2. For some reason, the rear setback got changed from 15 feet to 20 feet. I don't know where that came from. Prior to Jamie's sudden departure from the town staff, I asked her and she said she didn't know where that came from. So you need to look at where that came from and why. Because under my estimation, there are about 250 to 300 properties in the R2 district. I have not done an analysis of how many of them have accessory structures closer than 20 feet to the rail line. I don't think anyone on town staff has done that analysis. I think that analysis really needs to be done before you increase that setback by five feet. And all of a sudden make a potential 200 properties non-compliant. And when they go to make their garage into an accessory dwelling unit, now all of a sudden they're before ZBA. The intent of these, this regulation change is to hopefully have less properties going before ZBA. And under just that one regulation, you're going to make a lot more properties go before ZBA unnecessarily. The other one is the definition in the regulations of projections. They are, one part of the regulation says, projections in the tables, projections only on principal buildings can be three feet outside of the principal building. So all of these accessory buildings that we have built on the building line that have roof heaves and gutters and so forth, now all of a sudden are going to be non-compliant. Yet there is another part of these new regulations that say that all buildings can have projections. Which is it? There's contradictory words in your new regulations that don't fit. So I know at the last meeting you guys said, oh, we realized we're going to have to make some changes. It's been four years. Why have these changes not been looked at and not been made yet? So it's, you know, it's an imperfect regulation. Why approve something knowing that it's not perfect when you've had four years to make a regulation perfect? And once you ratify these regulations and approve them, professionals like myself have to live up to these regulations until some date when you make them better and make them right. How long is that going to take? Is it going to be another four years that professionals like myself have to deal with these flawed regulations? And go to ZBA or deal with it until they are changed and made right? Um, the other thing is, I'm looking at the stormwater regulations. And there is no concise stormwater event that you guys are asking for. So are you asking for a one-year event, five-year event, 25-year event, 50-year event, 100-year event? It's not spelled out. So me as a professional, I bid on a job and I say, well, I think the wetlands commission, the plan zoning commission is going to want us to design to the 100-year swarm. So we go in and we say, okay, we can fit with all the stormwater requirements, we can fit 20 units. Yet somebody else comes along and goes, oh, no, I can push through with a 10-year swarm. I can get 40 units on that property. I lose the job to that guy who's like, oh, no, I can push it through. There's no concise regulation as to what you guys are going to regulate. And I'm also concerned that, did the town engineer have any input on any of these regulations? Because I think not. The way that it's written, it looks like it's copy and pasted from another town. This town is not a copy and paste town. We are our own town. So if these regulations were copy and pasted from another town, it may or may not fit our town. And without the input of the town engineer or a third-party qualified engineer who knows stormwater, how can you write these regulations and regulate what we as professionals have to adhere to? Especially being as vague as they are written. Because it doesn't work, it's not right. It needs to be fixed before you can approve these regulations. I've got a few other points, but I think I'll yield my time and let me collect my thoughts and I'll come back to you guys again and continue on to somebody else. And I will calm down and then come back again. Thank you.
So from here, I don't have a clear order of showing who raised their hands in what order. So we'll go alphabetically by last name. So Joyce.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Joyce Appolito. I live at 586 Towner Swamp Road. And, um, I basically just wanted to make a quick statement to say that I'm opposed to the proposed regulations as they are currently written. Um, I believe it would be beneficial to have a comprehensive town plan that's written and approved before any of these rezoning changes are finalized. So basically, I wanted to reiterate, I agree with what Michael Scott and other people have put forward much more eloquently. But thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, continuing to go alphabetically, next would be Sarah Schubert. Sarah.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, uh, thank you to the commission for all of your hard work. I know this has been in the plannings for a very long time. I would say, I want to repeat what several other people have said tonight. And that is, especially Mary Jo Kestner and a couple of others, that we should not be rushing into a decision. This is too important for our town. And we as taxpayers deserve a much better, more concise explanation of what is changing and why. What are the goals? It's too hard, as it is right now, to, for an average person to, or even to some of the experts, to really understand what is changing and why it's changing. And we need something very simple that everybody can get their heads around. And I also think we need to press pause until we have a new planner in place. Thank you all for your work. That's all.
Next would be Karen Scott.
Hi, thanks. Can you hear me? Great, I'm Karen Scott, 593 Towner Swamp Road. So I just want to thank you for your time and the opportunity for public comments. I'm going to reiterate comments that I've heard tonight and during the last hearing. But I think it is important to restate them. So, um, so I'm an architect and urban planner. I've been practicing for over 25 years. I believe it's irresponsible to approve the proposed changes. It doesn't meet a standard of care that the town, that the homeowners expect and deserve. I suspect that the majority of residents are not anticipating the extent of changes that are proposed, the extent of the impact on those changes, and the extent that they diverge from previous Guilford master plans and reports. So I encourage you, I encourage us, the town, to go through a proper sequence where you have a shared vision, a master plan that the community understands. You get input, and then you put in place zoning regulations that can help manifest that master plan. It seems like we're going in the reverse order where we have regulations. I think these regulations were supposed to be a cleanup and they've turned into a, a much larger overhaul. So I just encourage us to encourage us to have a master plan and, um, and pause until we have a town planner. Thank you.
Then finally, we have Jonathan Silver.
Good evening. I'm John Silver. I live at 584 Towner Swamp Road. I've been in Guilford now for more than half a century, the last 41 years of which have been right here on Towner Swamp. I'd like to begin by saying how much I respect the effort being made at a comprehensive revision of Guilford's zoning regulations. It's the right thing to try to do and to try to do right. And the document clearly reflects a great deal of time, effort, and thought. And so it therefore pains me to have to suggest to you that while perhaps some sections could be carved out to enable adoption now, the better approach would be to decline to adopt the proposal at all at this time and to begin the process anew. But this time, I would hope with greater attention to and fidelity toward, among other things, the existing 2015 Guilford Route 1 West Planning Committee and its report and recommendations. With its emphasis on preservation of much of the existing landscape, including specific references to the Sullivan property just south of Route 1, that 2015 plan, which was also the product of a great deal of time, effort, and thought, either needs to be specifically repudiated. And I certainly hope that that would not be the commission's preferred course of action. Or else the proposed new regulations need to be reworked and harmonized. So the commission's mandate of both planning and zoning is accurately reflected in the final product. I know that's a bitter pill to swallow. Somebody, probably several somebodies, obviously worked very hard on this. And for them, as well as for those hoping to hitch their development plans to what they clearly view as a more favorable set of regulations, having this proposal not come to fruition tonight will no doubt be a disappointment. I get that, by the way. I spent 21 years as a judge of the Superior Court. There were some, thankfully not many, but some occasions we're having drafted what I thought was a terrific memorandum of decision. I then took a long, hard look at what I had written and what I thought were the finished product and realized reluctantly that it did not accomplish what I wanted to accomplish, that it had not taken into account all that needed to be taken into account, that it did not do justice, and that it had to be scrapped and started from scratch and often with a different result. I did not enjoy coming to the realization that my initial thoughts had been wrong, but I did what I had to do. The analogy of that situation to the proposed regulations is imperfect. But the basic point of that is that my faithfulness, my oath of office required me to start over and to try to get it right. When we take oaths to uphold the law, whether as members of local volunteer boards and commissions or as state constitutional officers, one of our occupational hazards is that we're sometimes called upon to make the kinds of decisions that will disappoint some people. What is ostensibly a noble effort to honor the memory of a young boy from a neighboring town by erecting, by erecting an athletic facility, a complex that will bear his name, in fact proposes to create one of the largest, if not the largest, multifaceted developments this town has ever seen. One that is potentially enabled by proposed regulations that ignore previous planning and present the prospect of the ruination of the neighborhood in which I reside. What are apparently good intentions can never be a justification for doing the wrong thing. Now, I'm not a planning and zoning expert. I don't propose to try to identify every offensive aspect of the proposed regulations. My comments here are based primarily on my perception of the violence this proposal does to a part of town in which I live. And particularly in the context of the proposed creation of a truly monstrous development that would change forever the landscape that the 2015 plan sought to preserve and protect. While my neighbors and others have all addressed and will probably continue to address specific components of the proposed regulations, my focus here is not so much on the substance of individual regulations as much as it is on procedure, on process. This effort to revamp the zoning regulations when superimposed on the proposed development of the west end of Route 1 is clearly inconsistent with the letter and spirit of prior planning. And I think it's inconsistent with what much of Guilford is all about. And I think it's inconsistent with what much of Guilford is all about. I understand, of course, this was hardly the intention of those who drafted these proposed regulations. And therefore, the only law that I will cite to you today is one that you will not find in the Connecticut General Statutes. It's the somewhat metaphorical law, the law of unintended consequences, the frequently observed observation in which an action produces results that are not part of the actor's purposes. But whether intended or unintended, consequences are real. And when those consequences are destructive of the fabric of a town, as these will be, at least in our part of town, they cannot be countenanced by the responsible governmental agencies. I urge you to decline to adopt these proposed regulations tonight. And I thank you both for your service to the town and its people and for your attention to all of us this evening.
There was one more this hand from Sarah Delventura.
Thank you. I'm sorry to hold this up and that I jumped on late here, but Sarah Delventura, fifty four Huckleberry Court. Um, I'm just, I, I want to reiterate what many have said here that I've heard in the last ten fifteen minutes, but um, I thank you all for your diligence and your hard work that you have spent in working on these regulations. There is obviously still work to be done. Um, there's a lot of spoken on an opposition of certain sections of the regulations. Um, the one thing that I would ask specifically is that you would highly consider um, passing certain sections that you are not hearing any opposition on. Specifically, there's the agricultural amendments that have been made. Specifically, not only us for bishops, but for other farms that are trying to move forward and to continue doing business in town. Um, these regulations, a lot of them, the, the current ones are antiquated. Um, there's a lot of things in there that it does not allow our farm and other farms to do um, that would not be disturbances to, to many and to the community. So my, my ask is that you, while moving forward and possibly holding off on, on passing the regulations as a whole, that you would consider passing certain sections that you're not hearing opposition on um, to help us to continue to do business in this community.
Go ahead, Keith.
Okay, thank you. Just I'm muting, I'm muting here. Oh, open up my screen as well. Uh, thank you very much again. Um, I won't reiterate my thanks for the commission, the work and as Jamie indicated your last hearing. I've been one community member that has been on and at most of the meetings during the process here. And it has been pretty thorough. Like I understand it is uh, very daunting for many of the changes that start to get very technical as well. So um, I just follow up on my request last time and what Sarah Delventura just spoke to a minute ago. Specifically, the sections relating to the farming changes that were vetted out very well with the I Commission, that is section six point one through six point one zero. Um, I feel they could stand on their own, that they could be adopted. Um, if the rest of the sections were having to be set aside. And the other section that I asked for that same consideration would be the uh, wind and solar energy sections there as we work to embrace uh, those technologies and requirements for renewable energy sources, and that is section eight point one. And so I'd hope that legal counsel could work closely at that and Glenn to see if those could be adopted independently without putting those things off as um, it might seem you'll be doing too diligent on the other sections based upon comments. Thank you.
All over the hands. Is there anyone else here in the audience that would like to speak?
My name is Lino and I live in twenty one Pennant Circle. And I just like to thank all my neighbors from Towner Swamp Road for their very articulate remarks tonight. I would like to say I agree with them. I urge you to not adopt this. I'd also like to say that I'm a nurse and when I speak to my patients, I'm very careful to speak in a way that they understand. I think you're very diplomatic this evening to say that it's hard to engage with COVID. I frankly don't understand the majority of what has been written. And I don't think that it's hard to do more of the resonance of Guilford. You do agree with those who said we deserve to know what, what's the amount we are and how it impacts on our neighbors. So um, I just want to thank you all for having this again.
It comes from the audience and it comes from Okay, um, at this point, we, I'd like to call the commissioners to see if you feel like we need to extend uh, public comment on this item or if we feel like we are likely to close public comment on this item. Um, I'll go through here, Kevin.
Oh, I, I definitely want to extend and I, I want to throw one of those things. I'm wondering if there's something else that we can do as mission or town staff to get this out there more into the public eye. I, I, I've been getting a lot, they ask me, could the people just aren't aware of what's going on? They're, they hadn't known about it or they're just hearing about it. I don't understand why that is. It just seemed like there's been, there's been an effort to get the word out there. One thing I found troubling was that the courier was here tonight and soon as the map application was tabled, they left. That, that should be, should be fun news on any little, any paper that we take. That being said, I offer extending the public access.
Larry?
Uh, I think extending is, is a good thing. I'm wondering um, if we could uh, meld in some of these uh, changes that are uh, technical or, or that are uh, very obvious. So, so that when we have another hearing, people are looking at uh, revisions that were made.
That would, that would require us to, to end to basically vote no and restart. That would require us to withdraw and restart.
Well, I don't want to do, but um.
Again.
I, 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 I think it's hard. Yeah, let's extend comments uh, before we do that. But we may well, I mean, what's the process? Because uh, if we close the comment period, right, then we're going to make all these revisions and now we have some things different. Is that akin to starting it over again?
No, um, the, the only requirement to start it over again is if we are starting to add something to the application. If we're revising the application or if we're calling things from the application, um, then that is fine. Um, with base of the process. So again, the process, just to reiterate for everyone, uh, when we close public hearing on the item, that is the signal that for um, for Glenn to finalize all the comments that we've gotten to this point, both in our meetings as well as online. And then at the next meeting following that, he will present all those items to us and we'll go through them, talk about what changes to make to based off of that comment, which changes not.
Perhaps because we're not changing, we're just making revisions, perhaps in your spreadsheet, you can uh, put things that are still controversial and things that we're likely to uh, accept. Because that way, when we get that out to the public, they can say, oh, here are all the comments. These are ones the commission is, is inclined to, and these are comments that, you know, are, are still up in the air. So that uh, the next commentary could be refined. You know, so, so it could be stepped forward.
Is there a next comment period?
Well, that's where, I think that's what we're talking about. And I, I, I think we should have one, but I think, what, what's your thought on that? I think this is the commission's call. I think Scott points out, I, I feel correctly that um, we're having a dialogue with the community to get comments and feedback. We've received a lot of, of interesting input as part of this. I think there comes a point in time where the commission says, in a sense, all right, timeout. Let's now compile the comments and organize them. And then there are different comments from different people with, it's got to be organized. And then we can see, listen, you know, I think Mr. Bishop tonight said section six of the regulations, uh, there's really no comments on sections six one through six ten, so those are good. Um, but there may be some other sections that you'll see there's quite a bit of comment. I think eventually it comes down to the commission's decision about how to proceed at that time. I think as Scott points out, we can actually make changes or edits or suggest what those are. The commission could say this, I feel comfortable this followed then what the community has been asking us to do, or the commission may say, you know what? Maybe it's prudent for us to just pause here, withdraw this application. You don't have to deny your own application. You could withdraw it. And go back to public hearing again. You may get exactly the same comments regardless, but but I think the commission's in charge, that you're the applicant, so you're in the reviewers, you're in charge of the process. My job in a sense is to help you and help the community come to decision about what it is you want to do. So I think um, if you wanted to keep the hearing open, see what we get for comments at some point in time, I'm looking forward. I mean, maybe I should be starting now to sort of organize and compile these, but I'm going to try to give you some input and feedback. So, so one, one of the problems is this isn't, hasn't been that much of a, a conversation. Uh, we've had people speak, you know, get three minutes to speak and without any dialogue back and forth. Right? And I think that's an element that's somehow lacking. And I'm trying to suggest a way that we can have that dialogue. So I, I
This, this, this is Sean, Sean customer. Um, and I think Glenn and I had touched on this at our meeting. And I've heard um, from people outside the confines of a meeting structure. Um, just, you know, being in the public. Why we can't have something that could be put in the public domain for people to examine? And, and ideally, based on comments tonight, be broadcast in a better, more effective way of the um, specific segments of the code that have changed. I, I don't want to use this, the word substantially, but maybe the word, the better word is meaningfully. Um, like a before and after and um, and, and then a logic for the, the change. Because when we started this whole process, and I was much younger then. Um, it, it was really about making the code more approachable, making it more readable. Um, make it more friendly to the users, you know, both the professionals. Um, you know, like Russ and, and all the other people that are, that are attending tonight, but also just the general public that want to build an accessory apartment or want you know, put a shed in their backyard, want to be sure that they're complying. So what I'm basically saying is I, I am, I am in pause mode. That's where I am.
So you prefer to withdraw at this point?
Yeah, I, I, I think based on comments and the, the obvious, the obvious involvement of, you know, the number of people we've had, which, you know, exceeds almost their meaning that we've had. There's interest in this.
Oh, so.
Bill?
He's muted.
I'm trying to unmute. There we go. Um. So could, could Scott, could you explain or Glenn explain again the various uh, possible things? I, I guess withdrawing is one at this point. Um, the other one is if you close the hearing, then is there any time limit for us to be able to discuss um, some of these more uh, thorny issues?
No, uh, the discussion will be as long as we need.
So the statutory timeframes on an application deal with the concept of due process as it relates to an applicant. You can't make an applicant wait for years for his decision. The commission is the applicant and the reviewer, and you can take as much time as you feel you need to make a good decision. You don't have to act in sixty five days after the close of the hearing, et cetera. People would like it to behave in a timely way, but it's your call as to what to do. So I, I think uh, that's certainly a situation. I think that the situation or the options that might be available to the commission at this point in time tonight would be you could extend the hearing. You could close the hearing and direct me to get started on compiling the comments. So you can see what we've got at this point in time in terms of our organized statement and reserve time later down the road for further decision making.
Well, I, I, I'll just, I'll just add that there are potential applicants that are just waiting for this to be resolved so that they know you know, what, what their, what their path is to getting an approval. And I, I think we, we've got it, we've got to, you know, sit down and, and find out where the, where the weak points in you know, what, what we proposed are. Um, maybe weak is not the right word. It's just they're, they're, they're not clear. Um, they don't, the public doesn't understand why we made the changes. Get it resolved and move it forward so that the public knows where we stand and then you know, we, this, this cannot go on for years and years.
No, I think, I'd just like to remind the commission and the community as well that we had a public meeting back in twenty twenty two. Because we've been working on it for some time. We got started before COVID. COVID slowed us up big time because we couldn't really have meetings. They hadn't perfected yet this hybrid meeting or the online stuff. And we weren't quite sure how to do all of that. When we started to come out of that, we had our first public meeting in major public meeting in January of twenty two. Um, George and Aaron had left. Jamie came on board. Jamie, over the course of the last year ran, can't tell you how many, it's on the town website. There's a list there of all the special pieces that were run on topics. Because these are the areas that were, people were concerned and so there were explanatory meetings. But not everybody showed up that showed up here at the hearing. So why not? I don't, I don't know. I can't tell you. But we had another public meeting in January of twenty twenty three. So this has not happened in the background. It hasn't been hidden from the community. It's just either people are waking up late or they're not paying attention. I don't know. But that doesn't change the fact that we need to do what's right for Guilford in the long run. And I think the regulations did get started on the concept of making them easier to use, more user friendly, clearer language, et cetera. But as problems were observed in the regulations, issues, well, are we just going to reorganize it and leave the problems here? No, we were going to try to address those. And that's what started and that's actually how the process grew a little bit. So I think the regulations today are meant to accomplish multiple objectives. The LID provisions in the current regulations are a misfit from, I'd say, twenty years ago. They were great at the time. They are so far behind the times right now in terms of engineering and other things like that. So we're trying to bring Guilford into the new age. Um, but we shouldn't rush on this. And so I think, uh, I leave it to the commission here to say formally. I would like to support you in every direction you decide you'd like.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Owens.
With all due respect to comments that have been made before, I would agree completely with Glenn. This has been one of the most open processes I've seen in my thirty two years of elected service to this community. What, what Jamie did in bringing sunlight to this process was unprecedented. The fact that some people did not pay attention until something came to their attention that was of concern to them does not diminish the work that this commission has done and commissioned through Jamie and Glenn. So, yes, I think there are some folks who are late to the dance who have some concerns because they've recently learned that there are things that are concerning to them. But I don't think that you should uh, throw this process out. I would say extend it and allow for further comments. I just, I, I think town staff has been done a disservice by some of the comments that I've heard tonight. This was the most open process I've seen in years. That, I'll get off my soapbox now.
Thank you. Uh, all right. Any comments, Phil, that you'd like to make?
Um, yeah, only that I was, you know, I, I understand that there are people that have concerns, but I also understand that there are people who have been waiting, as Sean said. So I want to have Sean clarify to me with, does he want us to withdraw this or he's want us to close it and then discuss it? And iron out some of these, these thorny issues that are out there between us, you know, and we, according to what Glenn said, we have a fair amount of time to to work through these things and get comments back from. To work through these things and get comments back from staff and and look at. How some of these things might affect, uh, you know, like some of the things Todd brought up, I I don't really, I didn't notice those. And I don't know if they're for in fact fact, but it would certainly be something to look into whether we're changing the, we're going to make a bunch of houses, a bunch of structures. Nonconforming, but I don't, I don't, I think we should not withdraw by any means because I believe that we should keep moving, but I. I I'm inclined to close it and then just do the hard work that we're supposed to do with with the comments.
Yeah, Bill, Bill, I agree, I I I don't want to withdraw and, you know, just back away completely, I I think we should, we should. You know, find a path to move forward in in um. You know, we we owe it to the public to get this resolved and, you know, I I think there's. We we can't. Forget the fact or or miss the fact that. If if we if we get something not quite right and we approve these, you know, not these, but a a regulation change to the code. That we can all can always be revisited. And if there are things we have to refine, we refine them. And our, you know, and our, we will not be here forever and our successors will do that as well.
And I think we need to move forward and we need to.
I I I think our 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 motto should be move forward, yes.
I'm just trying to let everyone have the ability to debate comment that that do anything else like that.
I think that Matt makes a good point. This this has been going on since before I came on the commission. We've had a lot of hearings. Uh, and I think that. We've gotten a lot of input. I'm having a hard time. Keeping all of the input in my mind, and that's why I think it may make some sense here. To close the uh, hearing. Let Glenn organize this. Let's sit down to go through this section by section. And where there have been constructive comments like this point about the R two zone fifteen feet to twenty feet. I mean, I have no idea what the technical reason for that was. But I think that a very valid question has been raised, and that's the kind of thing that the commission needs to discuss. And but on the other hand, there are significant portions of these changes. That are noncontroversial. And I think we can, what we need to do is we need to narrow down. The areas that we are going to consider. Let's let's settle on some. And then we'll boil down to some others that we need to think about maybe a little more. But I I don't, we we've had, I don't know how many of these public hearings. And I think that we uh. I I think we need to sit down and and sort this out at this.
Okay, uh, last is Ms. Johnson, Paul Johnson, anything that you'd like to add to the discussion? I don't know if he left.
I see other folks have their hands up again, is that?
Yeah, I mean, again, please be brief because we're we're in the middle of the discussion. And again, we have a hard stop at ten thirty.
Well, we haven't heard from uh, Marjorie Shansky, and I don't know if we've heard from Griffin, so.
We have heard from Todd Anderson and. For getting the first thing, this is not.
Ashley.
Ashley, thank you. So I'll start with Marjorie.
Let's hear Marjorie comments.
Um, good evening and thank you, I was disinclined to participate. Until you started to talk about closing the hearing, and I would like to say, since I have periodically attended these meetings over the several years that you've been working on it. Which has been illuminating, educational for me and.
Marjorie, could you just state, I I, we know your name, just state your address.
Uh, sure, I'm attorney Marjorie Shansky, I'm at sixty one East Grand Avenue in New Haven. But I appear before you. Periodically on behalf of property owners in Guilford, and that is my abiding interest in what you are doing. Um, I would make this procedural observation in these hybrid meetings, Mr. Chair, if the members who are in the room could identify themselves when they speak, it's. Impossible unless one is familiar with their voice to understand who's saying what. Just as an observation, I'm hoping that before you uh, shut down the regulation. That somebody will do a a big grammar and syntax review of it because there are some screaming issues that I know the town doesn't want to. Associate itself with as a published document. Um, the complexity of what I'm hearing this evening. Is that in both reformatting the regulations and revising the regulations, you've created a situation where even if you want to. Adopt Mr. Bishop's um. Plead for the uh, chapter six agricultural changes, are you going to do that in a two seventy three hyphen? Fashion and 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 incorporate it into the existing formatting, or are you going to independently reformat? And then be selective in the manner in which you uh, adopt. Various sections that, and that's certainly a judgment this commission can make, and I think I endorse that notion. Because from perspective of uh, the things that are ready for adoption, proceed, fix them, amend them, edit them as comment may have. Inspired you to do so, uh, and then go forward. I think that um, if you have not recently had a legal review of the status of the regulations, I would commend that to your attention. I also have not heard much conversation about the subdivision regulate, I've heard no conversation about the subdivision regulations, but you and your. Planning Commission role. Are responsible for those, um, and they must be consistent with the zoning regulations. So if and to the extent something that you're about to change in the zoning regulations is going to affect the subdivision regulations. You really need to be doing that simultaneously in order to create a coherent body of law. Uh, I'm, I take note of the amount of nonconformity that has been described to be created by the regulations and urge you. To take a look at that because one of the. One of the rules under the Connecticut general statutes is to reduce conformity, reduce nonconformity to conformity as quickly as the equities permit. It certainly is not the primary role of a zoning commission to create nonconformities. Um, I would also say, having studied uh, with some interest, the affordable housing section. That um, and listening to the comments this evening, that is a perfect opportunity for a more formal engagement with the Affordable Housing Committee. To get to a place that is perhaps more creative, more equitable, and will not have as stultifying effect on housing development in Guilford. As the current iteration suggests that it might. Uh, and then. Listening to Judge Silbert's eloquence. Begs the question of the extent to which the ancillary plans, because Guilford is distinguished for having done. Sections of town in individual plans. Are you about to embark on inconsistency with those plans? Do those plans need to um. Officially need to be abrogated or or uh, rejected or redone? In a way like we amend a plan of conservation and development if circumstances change that. Want us to take a different direction, so I think there's enormous potential here. I had a concern on behalf of my own clients whose interests are not necessarily represented in the draft. Either map or text, something I discussed with Jamie periodically, Jamie shouldn't we like be changing this into the regulations now? And she would say, no, do it afterward, and so my sense is the commission needs to understand that. The adoption of a recodification is not an achievement and an ending, it's really a beginning. It's the beginning of the next evaluation of of the direction in which the town proceeds to move. So I congratulate you on the hard work, I will say that under the Connecticut Zoning Enabling Act, the legislature has bestowed an awesome. Responsibility on you members of the commission and that the amount of input that you've taken from the public has been substantial. I'm not one who believes that uh, every last person needs to have every last opportunity. You've myriad opportunities for people to be heard. Um, and that you now take the task of trying to incorporate what is meaningful and right into the regulations. And I wish you well on that, thank you.
Um, so I'm the last to kind of express my opinion, I believe that we have put in an extensive amount of work on this item to make it. All as uh, as put out there to the public as possible. Um, every time that there's been a suggestion uh, that instead of one meeting, we should have two, we've done that. Every time there's been a suggestion that we should reach out to a certain group or another, we've done that. Um, and I think at this point, I feel that. Extending it another meeting for another round of public comments. I'm not sure we're going to get much more in the way of new comments, um, it feels to me like. You know, law commencing returns when it comes to the comment period, um, I think now is the time to um, end public hearing and um. Put the onus on Glenn to take everything that we've heard and present it to us in a way that we can go through each item. And discuss whether, you know, exactly that, the the specific points that are brought up. As well as some of the general ones also have value as well, so um, that's my opinion where we are, I think. That's the direction that we should go. Yes, good question, yes, sir.
Is there any reason? That we can't uh, uh, close a public hearing but still accept written comments? Because while uh. All the comments are collated, uh, we do our deliberations that take some time, I don't know that we need another public hearing, but. I think if people want to write written comments, is there anything to stop us from taking them? I'm thinking out of the box, because I don't know the box.
The only thing I would suggest, just as though we proper follow proper procedures, like there were some people that mentioned that spoke here tonight. And mentioned that they have some written things that they want to give as part of their testimony, I'm fine with accepting those items of those people. Um, but I think the website's been up for for a long time. We've been putting this out there as as many channels as we can find to put it out there, um, so I I think I think that should this. Essentially procedurally, we need to close public hearings and.
No, I I I agree, Scott, I, the window's going to close. You know, I mean, ice cream parlors don't stay up open until, you know, two AM, so we're just going to have to.
And how about give it a two more weeks?
Close the window.
I I what do you think, what else are we going to hear in the next two weeks?
I I don't know, probably not, I agree with you, probably not much more, I'm not making, at least. Allow two more weeks for those for those outstanding comments that you're talking about now, they can't be submitted if you close tonight.
Well, I'm just, all I'm stating is that that's part of their testimony that they mentioned tonight.
Okay.
They can be submitted.
As far as I'm concerned.
Oh, they, and they will be submitted, right, yes, okay.
Scott, I have a question about um, meetings, are we, um, what's the protocol if you want to have uh, additional meetings that are specifically focused on? On digging into these uh, sort of nitty gritty issues?
So I'll discuss with town staff as well as with Glenn, whether we want to do special meetings or if we wanted this to.
I I I I think, you know, where you're going, Bill, is we have, this is our work to do.
Yes.
The public hearings are over.
We need to have some special meetings where we really focus deeply. Ted and Ted, to Ted's point, there are areas that I that I'm confused by, and I, you know, I I. I want to have an open conversation where Glenn and and town staff and people can help us sort of weed through it and.
Yeah.
Out what what it really means, you know, that's our job, so.
I agree. I agree.
I think we need to have special meetings to deal with this because, I mean, we have. We have a backlog of. Have applications for, you know, daycare centers and this kind of stuff. We can't back all that stuff up, I mean, these meetings, the discussion with Glenn. It's going to take a while, and unless we're going to have meetings that start at six PM and then are over at three in the morning. We can't do uh, you know, every other Wednesday and do our regular business and then take on this too, which is. We're going to have separate meetings.
Yep, we will, we'll discuss that, um, like I said, we'll discuss it with town staff and with Glenn and amongst ourselves to figure out what that process is. Um, but at hand is, um, we would need to make a motion to close public hearing on this item. We would like to second. There is a second, is there any any further discussion that anyone wants to make?
Quickly. I I'd like to, just some clarification as to what you are, what kind of dialogue you're allowing, what kind of new information you're allowing after the close of the public hearing?
Well, it's not really new information, it's, there there are going to be, the only thing that's going to happen is there's going to be correlation of all the comments that have we've gotten from the public over online and from our meetings. So we collated with Glenn and town staff together. And then it's presented to us and discussed, both by Glenn and we, and as well as town staff can be part of that discussion as well.
I I I think I think what Steve is asking is if we get another um, public comment in the form of an email or a letter, a physical letter. That arrives at planning and zoning. Are we saying that, given the public hearing is closing tonight, are we going to accept it? You're asking, Steve?
Correct, there were not, there were not.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure that we're we're, if we're closing the public hearing, we're closing the public comment period entirely, all forms.
Exactly.
Thank you.
There's no in between, unfortunately, but that's just the way that the process works.
Nope, I just want to make sure procedurally we're.
I I I appreciate that.
I needed that clarification myself, thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion or footprints? All right, we'll go through and vote, Larry Vazolo?
Uh, yes.
Kevin Clark?
Yes.
Ted Sands?
Yes.
Bill Frampton?
Yes.
Phil Dutton, I think we lost him. Staying Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
Well, I also, yes. Uh, that is our public hearing for this meeting as well. We'll move on to the regular meeting.
I just think my intention is now to compile comments that we have received, written comments and everything else. Um, we calculated where we were at this afternoon, we were up to sixty two separate communications, and that included written. But also included the oral testimony from people at the last meeting and now what we've heard here tonight. There's enough material that I would request that I have about two weeks to get this together. And give you guys two weeks to look at it, so in other words, I think our next meeting getting together would be early July. Either in a regular meeting, depending on your agenda, or as you pointed out, possibly a special meeting. I think it's going to take about two weeks to get all of this stuff organized in a way that I think will help you go through your evaluation, so.
Well, I would ask you and and Steve to come up with, you know, when do we want to meet to discuss what the process is going to be going on?
By your next meeting, we should have a pretty good plan as to where we're going to discuss.
Yeah, I I think we can, we can base that on the volume of applications we get, if we get a very, very low volume of applications, we could do. You know, something resembling a special meeting during our regularly scheduled meeting.
It wouldn't need to be, it would just be filling, filling part of our regular meeting.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, if it happens to be a slow meeting, we can also discuss it during the regular meeting as well as.
Yep.
It would be twice in a week.
Correct, we we can do a lot of it, so we'll just discuss it and come up with the best process. Um, okay. Uh, when you have one new application, uh, Todd Pay Anderson, Anderson Engineering Survey Associates, one eighty seven, three mile forest map seventy. Subdivision and coastal site plan to split existing parcel into two new lots of equal size. Received and set for June twenty first, twenty twenty three, do you hear a motion?
Make a motion, we accept it.
Second.
Second.
Larry Zola?
Yes. Yes.
Todd Samz?
Yes.
Phil Freeman?
Yes.
Johnson is staying, Charles Hossgrove?
Aye.
All right, other commission business, approval of the minutes, was anyone able to review the minutes from our May seventeen meeting?
I looked at them, they looked substantially correct.
Then we'll just make a motion to approve.
The move.
Sean, for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any additions? Other than Phil? All right, which carries, Sean or or. Denise, is there any other items that we need to discuss? Steve, do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, and then I don't have much to do here.
The move.
Thank you, Larry, I'm looking second, Sean, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Great meeting. For the new meeting. Thanks.
Make sure.